Are you guys muted?
Others anguishing over whether.
I still can't hear you.
Does the town have the meeting on mute? Somebody needs to unmute the mic. We cannot hear you. Please unmute the mic in the meeting room. Does anyone at the town have control over the volume of this meeting? Nobody on the phone can hear you.
It appears that Karen's not at the meeting tonight and Jenny's running the computer. And I've messaged her and Bill Clevinger, but I haven't got any response to tell them to turn it on.
Thank you.
Than anything else. If the maintenance that's being set aside is not covering just the maintenance to maintain it at a particular level.
Thank you.
No, it's more that the income is supporting the park, park, not just this department.
Yeah, I mean, I would say both. I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
We have an increase of like that repair line item has been increasing every year since I've started, which was five years ago. So that's increasing each year. We are seeing more cracks and like holes. And if you see any like, our renters are more than welcome to communicate that. I mean, I walk them, but you're more than, we always replace them. If it's communicated with us, we do it in a way that like if a panel has a crack on it, we replace that panel. Because as Bill is alluding to, if we were to replace every, I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands, but that's usually how we handle repairs. But I have people report holes and cracks and.
And just for the budget perspective and expenditures this year, I think we spent about $2,000 in pure repairs this year. We're budgeting $6,000 for next year. Is there anyone online? Thank you.
We can check online, but I do have a letter from a citizen that I should read into the minutes.
We can't, we've been on mute for six minutes.
Came in this afternoon. And it was emailed to me and the clerk, the name is J D Castleman at 641 Forest Place in Culver. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity and comment on the town pure rate increase. I'm a retired fixed income full-time resident townie in Slip B 29. Last spring, I was lucky to find an inexpensive tiny boat and used to lift. This past voting season was my first. It was great spending time with friends and family on the lake and in the park. The park's leadership, the employees and park improvements are fantastic. Great job to all. I grew up on a nearby farm and money-wise closely relate to the seemingly dwindling number of full-time have-not residents rather than to the seemingly increasing number of part-time have-residents. As such, the pure rate increase does present future financial concern to me. However, all that said and considered, I do see the peers and associated facilities are in need of some upgrade. Therefore, I do support the 2023 pure rental rate increase. In regard to needed here and facility upgrades, several of my summer boat guests make cringe remarks about the primitive public restrooms. I do not blame current Culver managers and officials for the porta potty problem. I lay that on the failure of our years past Culver managers and officials. Year after year, the can, so to speak, has been kicked down the road. And it's just not fair that this issue has been dumped on our awesome current managers. Why do we continue to put up with these porta potties? I've discussed this with many, and I think maybe the porta potties have been there so long, people's senses have become dulled. An example, at last Summer's Lake Fest 2021, the statue of those porta potties and all the additional ones brought in for the event, at least on the evening I was there, was overwhelming. Some local friends of mine seem to have not noticed until I mentioned them. They were appalled. The porta potty location prime front and center at the highest point of park with no screen or wall, what an eyesore. That's a location typically one might think best for a monument or something we can be proud of. I get coffee every morning right across the street and love the lake sunrise, but not the fact that the sun rises over the porta potties. It's sad and embarrassing. And when the morning pump or truck comes, sometimes every morning in the busy summer, no one wants to be around that. Truck and pump is so loud, you can barely hear it for blocks. I understand the installation of a permanent public facility presents cost, maintenance, security and other challenges. I know there have been passed, there have been in the past, and there are current efforts to deal with the issue. Other local parks in town seem to have found ways to deal with this issue of a permanent facility. I find that an encouraging sign that me and Culver can do the same. If any community input or volunteer position is available to assist in addressing the porta potty issue, I would gladly volunteer my time and ideas. Thank you, Katie Cast. Sally, I'm not sure if anyone online, if you could unmute yourself if you have public input.
We have little idea what you're talking about. We've been muted for the last 20 minutes.
Here's the non, is there any more public input in?
John Helfrey, Southern Detroit Academy Road. Yeah, I support the increase. I appreciate the fact that there hasn't been one for five years. Well, I'm looking at the budget and you got estimated income from the park of 285,000. You got a total of expenses of 378,000, which leaves a 92,600 shortfall. My question would be, you got 140,700 services and charges. I'm not sure what that is. I'm sure personal services are salaries and manpower. And then you got capital outlays, that's probably for some of the building situation. But if this, this increase is going to amount to about $35,000 in additional income from what the peers bring in. Are we still going to have another shortfall? Are we going to be looking at this next year? Another increase? And especially if you're just going to piecemeal the peers, if you're not going to new peers and just replace some decking and some pipes. Are we going to be faced with this again in two years or a year?
As we went through the budget process, we talked about concern about capital expenditures on the peers putting down the road because we don't have a reserve necessarily set aside for those peer replacements. And we talked about studying that issue this year as we, as we go into it to figure out what we need to do. What would be a reasonable reserve for those peer replacements that anticipate will end up being necessary in the future?
One of the things to note about that particular budget, John, that I know Karen would want to comment on. We had originally budgeted last year for the stellar, regional stellar park project that's going on in the West End. Well, that project got started later than we wanted to start it. So Karen included it in this year's budget as well. So technically part will probably come out of this year's and part next year. So there, there may not be a 30 to 60, like somewhere within that range. We're still using part of this year's budget, but she wanted to make sure we didn't have to do a special appropriation. So it, even though it looks like there's potential for a shortfall, part of it was budgeted for this year. So we're technically going to take it out of what's left over from this year. So it's not as big a shortfall as it looks. And the, the other project that got budgeted is redoing the parking lot. Because it's sort of the last piece, you know, we've kind of renovated from one end of the park to the other. And that'll probably be our last major capital improvement for quite a while in the park because from the beach lodge, literally everything's been redone once that west park is taken care of. So the shortfall isn't really as much as it looks like on paper. Once we, it depends on how much they get done this year. Otherwise, we end up encumbering or we'd have to do a special appropriation next year if we hadn't put it in the budget. And so, and Amber had enough in her park general fund to cover this new capital project with the park. Karen would explain it a little more eloquently than me, but I know she'd want me to respond.
Thank you. If there aren't any more questions. We need to close the hearing, close the hearing. First reading, next on the agenda is first reading, 2022 006.
I would make the motion that we approve one first reading, 2022 006. I think the running order itself needs to be revised. That would be my motion.
I have second, second. Paul Taylor.
Hi. Motion to suspend the rules on for second reading, please. Of ordinance 2020-006.
Second then.
Paul Taylor.
Hi.
You just wanted to suspend the rules for second pass, is that?
That's what.
Second, third, and third.
Move to suspend the rules. Pass ordinance 2020-006 on third read.
Second.
Thank you. Town manager report.
All right. First thing I wanted to ask you that's not in the report, as you know, Chuck DeWitt has resigned, so I wanted to have the council officially accept that resignation. I have a signature on a letter from him, so I thought we should do that. And then I, I'm not sure Jim, but right now I'm taking on those duties. Does the council need to authorize me to serve as a building commissioner until such time?
There was a motion for you to serve on basis. Move that we accept the resignation, resignation of the commission. Second.
Second, Paul Taylor.
I, I.
And in the interim, we authorize town manager to fulfill the roles and responsibilities of that position.
Second.
Paul Taylor.
I, I.
You allow us to authorize you to advertise for?
I want to fill out at least for the next meeting because I've asked the county and I, I met with the county last Friday and we've had a discussion and Ty is going to do some homework on his end and potentially give us a proposal for how they can step in and help out. I don't know what that will look like enough to, so.
In the interim, are we asking them to do anything that we need to authorize here?
No, they have been extraordinarily helpful though to me in the last three days. So I really appreciate that.
If you do need inspection, just call the county.
Yeah. Under the utility street department, I sent you guys a quote for our meters. These have a 36 week lead time. It will take that long to get them. So we would like to have you approve the quote for 9,551 from E J P.
I move that we accept the quote of $9,551 for E J P meters.
Second.
I'll second that, just with a footnote, that that is the only provider of the meters, which is why there's only one book.
Yeah.
Just dance.
We do our similar meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bob and I are discussing advertising for that position for the utility department. And then I think we mentioned to you guys that the part-time employee that left, that we'd like to replace with a full-time employee, Karen and Bob, we're going to do some research on affordability of that. So Bob would like for us to maybe have an executive session to discuss personnel. And I wondered if you all would be willing to schedule that in the next week or two, I'm thinking, or we can even do as early as Friday. If you want to do another like 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock on Friday during business hours, like Bob's here. I didn't know if you were teaching that, Bill.
I am teaching on Friday.
And we can always do it like next week on Tuesday after business hours, if you prefer.
This school get on it too, something on Fridays at 3.
What time are you suggesting?
3 would be fine.
Fine, 3 works.
3 o'clock Friday? Okay, then I'll, I'll get that advertised.
Thank you. Could I suggest it be to the brothers' fellow personnel issues in that department?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Moving on, there's no change on the two trail projects, so I'm going to move down to the Midwestern proposal. This is the project in the north end of town that took us so long to get the reason it worked out. So Bob touched base with Mark Sullivan, and you guys had already approved the proposal from Midwestern to do this engineering on this project. The fees have gone up slightly since the year has passed. So I've outlined in your town manager report here what that total is. It was prior to, last year it was $42,000 something. It's $48,000. And Bob wants to get that started now that we have the easement agreement because we'd like to get that put in before the trail project. And we need to get, this is just for engineering. And this is the project that Karen is suggesting we use the art of funding for. So construction would be covered after it would go out to bid and Midwestern would help us with that. But the estimate, your original estimate from had the construction cost in there as well, but this is just a pay for engineering to start with.
I think that we approve the proposal with engineering, with design fees and for the assistance with reviewing the proposals to convince, and then also for instruction management supervision for the amount of, I do see $48,000.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Next, second. Have a motion in the second law in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Peerless proposal, that easement language is now with the attorney at CMD. He is getting in touch with IEM to work out that addition. As you recall, we had this easement worked out based on items language, and then they threw us a curve ball and asked us to add a paragraph. That should be done soon. BS Engineering, that's the community crossing grant application. We're still waiting to hear on that. So I'll move down the park crossroads stellar project and the beach drainage. Both of those projects are Thomas excavating. As you know, Thomas was the low bidder for the stellar project. They wanted to do both of these at the same time. They've done work now on the drainage project. They've moved over to the park and they will be getting on more removal there. Right now, they've only taken out, I think, the wave binding signs, bushes and such, kind of around that western end. But we, we are expecting them to start taking out the playground equipment anytime.
Question on that project, I don't know if you were handling Bob, but the, the walkway there at the main entrance to the beach lodge now have been, there's a, the curb has been built up to create a, basically a way to funnel the, the, through the water that runs down Lake Shore Drive and makes it through there and runs into the beach lodge. Just because that is potential trip hazard, could I suggest that we either paint that yellow or orange or do something to make it more identifiable? I think there's a one cutaway now where that, near the handicap access spot. So there is a, you don't have to necessarily step over that, that eight or 10 inch curb, but I would suggest we do some type of identification of that because I think it's a potential.
Are you talking about the drain that pops out on the hill or the...
No, not the drain. Talking about the curb, the curb that actually runs through the wall. And we took out the curb cut out for the walkway.
Yeah.
By the...
I mean, you want me to paint the curb yellow, like all, like...
Yeah, they probably...
Are you saying just because people are used to walking there?
They're used to walking there, and it's also a high level for a lot of people. I noticed...
There's another insurance.
There's one where the handicap park, it's, I know, but I noticed with the Yucca crowd, there was, there was, there was some, and also after the, the plein air event, a number of people were...
Yeah, I mean, we can paint it. I think it's just a matter of habit. Like, people are going to start using, but we can paint it, yes.
Identify it some way.
Bob will want to paint it whatever color for parking because yellow is usually, don't park here on the intersection.
And I can have, I mean, we're redoing that whole parking lot and they're going to re-mark and we're going to redesign. You can just do it when we redesign all the markings.
And I think all, almost all of that area along there is no parking anyway, I think.
Yeah, and it, like, it all, like, needs completely re-marked.
Okay.
Okay. More per, moving on. Sorry, I'm going to find my place. I think I wrote you a book this time. Comprehensive plan, the MayCOC was back for our Crossroads Culver meeting, and that work is continuing. This week, we focused on department heads had a SWAT analysis activity at the beach lodge. We had some lunch over there and all the department heads came and contributed to that. And then we met with the Culver steering committee afterwards, the Crossroads Culver team, and we've now established vision, mission statement based on some of the SWAT work done by stakeholder groups. So that's continuing to come along. MayCOC has been fantastic to work with. The community crossings grant that we did receive for this year, that paving is almost done. Bob said striking was going on today. They're going to come back and do ADA approaches, topsail, and barricade removal probably tomorrow if the weather's good. So we should be wrapping up that paving project from that grant. I have a special event permit from Knights of Columbus. They pick either parent weekend of, at the academy or rain date. So they, that's why there's two dates on your town manager report at 10:08 or 10:15. They do their candy drive, and it's at the major intersection, State Road 17 and 10, Lake Shore and Academy, and downtown Jefferson Street in Maine. So we're looking to get approval for that.
I move that we approve the Knights of Columbus for October 8th, 22, or October 15th, 22, pending weather.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself of my permission to say that. You still have people, but... That works.
All right, thanks, Rich. I'm going to go down to Marshall County Crossroads Ready Grant. I think I let you guys know on email, we got $1.3 million. They've already reached out and done some PR work with us. And then they are going to have a meeting on how to get started on this project. Bill Giffen, Sally as chair of CRC, myself, and Bob Porter will be meeting with Mr. Collins and his team this coming Friday so we can start talking housing projects. And Jim, remind me, I have to send you a memo regarding this. So I don't want to forget. And that's it for now. And hopefully the department heads will, but you know, if I miss something in a busy week. It's only Tuesday.
Thank you. Congratulations on all your work for the ready grant.
Yep.
Department head reports. Jeff online for...
I do not think so. And last time I talked to him, Doff, are you online? Yeah, I didn't think he was attending. And I, is Sway in here? I don't know that my voice, Sally, I didn't get in touch with people for the meeting, unfortunately.
Terry, do you have anything?
Just one thing, just for your information, the Scott Air Packs and bottles that you approved, we just sold a while back. We sold them this weekend to Grass Creek. Just an informational thing besides anything else I can...
At least Grass Creek ain't where it's at.
Well-used there.
Yeah, yeah. Rain's not online.
Just as Jay mentioned, the drainage project is done. We're ready to go for the park playground renovation project. I sent a message like, we starting. So hopefully it'll be this week or that. So anything now, it's all, it's all ready to go. So I kind of just see them go one day and then they zoom. So the completion won't occur until the spring or early summer of 2023. Other than that, I think since we last met, we've done the park outdoor night. We had a really good turnout. I think we had about, the count we have is around 125 people. Really good turnout. It was a lot of fun. Just finished hosting the Culver Paint Out. And then we'll be, the parts of our movie contributing an outdoor movie at Fall Fest. Not this weekend, but the next, so...
Just, I think to you and to Aaron, on the plein air event, I think that was a great event.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Bob is online, so...
Okay, Bob.
I have nothing for you unless you have something for me.
Utilities.
He's unmuted himself. Are you there, Bob?
I'm here.
Well, he's trying to talk.
I have nothing for you unless you have something for me.
Happening, but I'm having technical issues tonight because like, there were people putting stuff in the chat that they couldn't hear, and it's not, it wasn't showing up on my end.
Go ahead and call in, by phone.
Yeah, we can do that. Bob, if you have anything, call my phone or call Rich West.
I have nothing.
He's trying to unmute himself again. I don't think he's, but I think I covered about the two quotes and the executive session schedule, so I think we're okay.
Since he can't get in, we'll move on. And if somehow he calls in, we can go back to it.
Yeah, sometimes the people who come in, not via the link, but come in on the phone. For some reason, we sometimes have audio problems with that.
Okay. Is there anyone from the Plan Commission?
No, but Plan Commission, at their next meeting, they will have a couple of ordinance changes that we will be publishing a public hearing on. They're really minor changes. For example, right now, our ordinance requires that we publish in the Culver Citizen, and since it only publishes twice a month now, we want to change that to a local newspaper like the Pilot News. So it's not a requirement to be the citizen because sometimes meeting that deadline puts us a month behind. So...
Right.
And Marty just put in the chat that he could hear Bob, so the other people on the call could hear Bob. We just couldn't hear Bob anymore for us.
Okay.
And then BCA goes, how the case is coming up at their next meeting that I will publish for tomorrow. So both those groups have been pretty active.
All right. The redevelopment commission met when we discussed the problem with lights or problem that there is light. Lights aren't burning on one block. Unfortunately, CRC can't pay for upkeep of that type of, we pay to have installers a grant, but we can't maintain, not pay for maintenance. So I think that we can take that to...
Yeah, visitor center.
Visitor center. Yeah.
Yeah, it came up at visitor center, and I suggested chambers. Saul suggested to the chamber as well. And I'm meeting with the new director of the chamber next week, so I'll bring it up there.
That'd be great. And the next meeting is on October 17th, 5:15 PM. Is there anyone from Tree Commission? Mr. Stallings?
Yes, we have, we identified earlier in the summer 17 trees that needed to come down. We have taken 13 of them out. The other four will be done in the next couple of weeks. And last week, we went to Dogwood Hills Tree Farm and purchased 30 new trees of various species, and those will be planted last weekend in October.
Very good, great. Next item on the agenda is first reading for...
Yeah, I have her report. Basically, she just has claims in excess of 2,500. I'll go ahead and, the whole list is here, but I'll go ahead and list the ones that you have to approve. These are previously approved brick services. That's for the Saul. That was $20,550. Also, best equipment, which is the leaf truck. That was $184,943. Previously approved also was contract with MayCOC. That's for the cop land work. They've submitted an invoice for $3,614.16. And then under operations and contractual work, we have NIPSCO and AIM Medical Trust. NIPSCO is $3,437.40. AIM Medical Trust is $27,684.47. That's for health insurance. Then under payroll, we have the Internal Revenue Service and the IMPRS and PERF. Internal Revenue Service is $11,357.44. PERF is $5,793.81. And under redevelopment, we have the trail projects and the park improvement project, which is Shannon McCloud. The two trail projects are tour for $2,752.03 and $3,581.83. And then Shannon McCloud's priority project resources is $25,000.
That motion will approve. Claims over 2,500. So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's, I believe, all she had, Sally.
Okay, thank you. Commission report.
The, we filed the brief in response to the, as part of the Plan Commission request for judicial review last Friday. Moral argument is October 4th at 9:00 AM in the Marshal Circuit Court. It is open to the public, probably not going to be a very lengthy kind of thing because known... It is open to the public, probably not going to be a very lengthy kind of thing, because no new evidence is going to be presented. It's just argument on the record. The petitioners argued that the PUD application was to try and avoid other zoning classifications and development standards and, you know, kind of get around maybe the other setback requirements. We responded that there were valid reasons for the PUD application, and that the Plan Commission followed the zoning ordinance, followed all the procedures, gave everybody an opportunity, and that they made their determinations after following the review considerations that are part of the zoning ordinance. So we'll see what the judge has to say about all of that. And I sent all of you this afternoon, copy of that brief, so.
I haven't had a chance to read it.
You expect, you expect it will be a decision?
I, I don't know that there'll be a decision, Judge Palmer, I know he's been on vacation, I don't know if he was going to tell that. So I don't know, you know, and of course, we just filed Friday, he's got two briefs to read. It's coming up next Tuesday, and I don't know how long he's been back, I'm not even sure if he's been back yet, or he isn't back yet. So I don't know whether he'll have a lot of time to review that ahead of time. Typically, he would not make a decision on Tuesday. He may have some comments that might tip us off to what he's thinking, but probably no decision until sometime after he takes under advisement and then issues a written decision. And he's been really pretty good, if I can get things out. So hopefully he'll respond. And I'll try to tell him.
Thank you. I hope that he gets trusted of. Is there anyone here for a, or online for a utility shut off or an ordinance violation? Hearing none, we'll go to citizen input, anyone have any citizen input? Terry?
Just got a couple of small, I think, kind of fell in my category, not a, it's not a flag, but the academy, the academy water tower was down all summer long. Just contacted me last week, they're up and running, which is really good for everybody and us. Also, the new press box at the academy is going to be, I think it's this Friday, is going to be at a one hundred percent, so they'll have full. Just some campus news and things in the area.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other citizen input?
Anyone online have citizen input? Doesn't look like I'm getting anything in the chat when we were starting, so we're okay.
Seeing none, hearing none, and we will move on to council issues, Rich, do you have any?
Nothing.
Bill?
I have a couple of things. Last Thursday, county and state building board met, and we dealt with Mr. Bozeman. Unfortunately, Mr. Bozeman did not appear in person, but first item that took place was that the county has ordered the demolition of the building that's burned. So that will probably go to the next meeting for bids. But a little interesting thing happened. Judge issued, Mr. Bozeman has been refusing to let the building inspector in to the, I call it the gray building at six hundred. And the judge issued a warrant for him to admit the building inspector, so I haven't heard anything back, if I'm correct, if you heard anything.
No.
So those were the two things, we'll move along.
Good to know, thank you. Bill, nothing? You already spoke. I am, duh.
I'm fried, I don't know what's.
Jenny, I got a lot already, so I'm sure she has nothing to add.
I know we adjourned, please. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.